I've had come over me these happy days, I've been afraid that I might drift away. I've been telling all stories, singing songs, makes me think about where I come from. That's the reason why I sing so far away today. Let me tell you that I love you, that I think about you all the time. Caledonia, you're calling me, now I'm going home. And if I should become a stranger, now it would make me more than sad. Caledonia has been everything I've ever had. Now I have moved and I kept on moving, proved the point that I needed proving. Lost the friends that I needed losing, found others on the way. I have kissed a fellow, sent a pen silent, stolen dreams, yes, there's no denying. My travel heart and my conscience flying, and somewhere in the wind. Let me tell you that I love you, that I think about you all the time. Caledonia, you're calling me, now I'm going home. And if I should become a stranger, now it would make me more than sad. Caledonia has been everything I've ever had. I'm sitting here before the fire, in the empty room in the forest choir. If the flames are good to get any higher, ain't winter now they're gone. I'm steady thinking my way is clear, and I know what I will do tomorrow. But the hands are shaking, kisses flowing, and I will disappear. Let me tell you that I love you, that I think about you all the time. Caledonia, you're calling me, now I'm going home. And if I should become a stranger, now it would make me more than sad. Caledonia has been everything I've ever had. Caledonia has been everything I've ever had.
Thank you, Rosie. It now pays me great pleasure to invite up here, Lach, councillor Tardeley for Gorman, to speak.
Thank you very much, Claire. You can understand. Thank you very much, Claire. Looking at all the proceedings, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening to the 2023 awards ceremony here in our council offices in Lanford. And it's a lovely evening for the event, and it's great to see so many people out. And of course, we had COVID there for two years and nobody saw anyone. And it's great to be back and to recognise the hard work across the people and the communities in County Lanford. And even though we're a small county here in Lanford, and I'm not afraid to say this, anywhere ago, I think Lanford touches above her weight in anything we carry on in this county. And especially as shown in Edgerton, in the Young Scientist Day we had there for Computer Science Day two weeks ago. And we were very proud that day of all our staff here in Lanford County Council, supported by the members throughout the county. Even though in the next eight or nine months, it could be going at each other's neck maybe for votes, but at the end, everyone is pulling together and it's great, great. Unfortunately, we couldn't recognise and get, we couldn't give awards to everyone around the county. But looking, I would like to give, it was a very high caliber, a voluntary effort throughout the county. And this goes on from year to year. So where in some eyes, some people mightn't be recognised here tonight, definitely in their own communities, you couldn't give everyone an award. So I would like to give everyone a round of applause. Thanks very much. We are four long and heats, of course, tonight. Paddy Cotton, carried by all community out there, and there by councillor Paul Ross. Delores and Frank Hearn was by the one and only advice Chair of the Council here, and Chair of the Council, Lanford municipal here in Lanford, Gerry Haggen. And last night, where he's looking forward to a very big crowd with the ploughing out in Tullow there this year. The Hillside then is the show, sorry, the show. The Hillside Club here is nominated by Colin Doughton here tonight, and myself nominated, the one and only Roger Martin. So looking, I would like to thank such a beautiful way to start the evening. Thank you very much to a beautiful song, and I think you deserve a big round of applause. And let's start taking from our musicians here on the right hand side. Has been at several events here in the council, and they're just fantastic. And it brings a great atmosphere to the place here in the council. And I would like to thank our staff here in the council for having these from year on, year off. Paddy Mann, Chief Executive, Barbara Heston, Director of Services, John Rannigan, Michael Nevin, and Samantha Healy for having this event here this evening. And this wouldn't take place, of course, on the great help from our staff inside here in the council. And I would like to just acknowledge the great work done by Jared Dillingham there, which is no strange for anyone here, Jared and Joe and Laura, and of course, Claire here on the left. Thanks very much for the scene then. I suppose, I was just thinking when I seen Joe Hunt, is he there or someone who is? I was thinking between Lee and Kerry Gedman, and as you're coming up the middle of the floor, and we got Roger to get hard away from Paddy Nolan and the referee there. And then if you pull to the left, I remember my own father wrestling when Frank Hearn was there on the left. And I'll tell you, Frank loved to see Daddy wrestling because he wasn't too fond of blowing under the whistle. And then, of course, on another table down there is an ex-referee and chairman and whatever you like to call him, is from the Ballyley side, and Charlie Martin couldn't be just with us here tonight. But Jimmy used to, or Charlie used to say to Jimmy, "Do you want me to nail now before the match up when you take the draw?" So that was the way it then was going on. So looking, on behalf of Lanford County Council and everyone, I hope you have a fantastic evening. And certainly, it's great to see numbers out again. And enjoy the evening, it's a very, it's a very worthy evening and to be acknowledged here this evening in a special county that we all grew up in and we love to do. We may not know a big all island crowds, but we have winners and we're very proud of them. And I'm proud of every group that's out there and comes forward for the help in Lanford County Council. And we intended as public representatives to be as supportive as we can throughout our career in the council here. Coramina Laggott.
Our first nomination this evening is Vali Tom and Carrie Boy all committee. Vali Tom and Carrie Boy all committee was nominated by councillor Paul Ross, a peer of Vali Lanford District for 2022, 2023. This group is all about community spirit, has developed a journey to call it a thriving community hub in the heart of the community. This project not only refurbished the hall, but also revitalised the entire community, organising numerous events and activities taking place on a weekly and monthly basis. The community hall drew near the area a more attractive place to live for both young and old. The committee, through their hard work, have safeguarded the future of the hall for the next generation and are very worthy recipients of this award. Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome John Murray, Chairman of Vali Tom and Carrie Boy all committee, to accept the award.
Just for the while, thanks very much. And you know, I didn't mean to call out the person who's representing and the town, and that would be, wouldn't be one of, four of them. I think we have a person that lay like it would have been, well, she's definitely, the roshin would make it okay before I'm honest. There is a few particular volunteers down there who worked here on the hall and the rest of it. A lot of the rest of the commission, but Patrick Ramons on the minute, that is, a person who has come on the treasury work for us for a lot of things. So we very much appreciate that. And all the rest of it, it's an honour to have those. I just want to make a quick comment for the time, with the partner, for the year. I won't get to the tea for all the bits from the day, but one particular man who was there, and this fellow on the other side was acting the bones, he's very good at it. Was, and once he had one guy that got top of him, he must have hit him a lot. Before all that's full of off, Harry didn't know at the time, but the way I, oh, he just made the comment, "Why didn't you just let him alone? He had me back, Paul."
Our next nomination this evening is Franklin Delores Hearn. Franklin Delores were nominated by councillor Gerry Haggen, a peer of Lanford Municipal District for 2022 and 2023. Franklin Delores, together with their family, are steeped in our local community here in Lanford. They are huge supporters of all organisations throughout the county and beyond. Their generous sponsorship greatly benefits many of our local organisations. For over thirty years, from a small local business in Kilti River, to today, a multimillion internationally recognised industry leader. The company now employs over three hundred and fifty staff between Ireland and the UK. Franklin Delores, along with their loyal staff and family, are still at the helm in running and developing their very successful enterprise and long may it continue. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Franklin Delores Hearn.
Good to have you here, long time, Gerry Haggen, from Lanford. And thank you for coming to the board. It's a very, it's a long way here, but we appreciate the work you've done.
Our next nomination is the Hillside Club from Vala Lee. The Hillside Club were nominated by councillor Colin Doughton, Rosa Gaherle for Brannad Municipal District, 2022 and 2023. For the past twenty-three years, the Hillside Club of Vala Lee have been a very part of the local community. Committees both past and present have dedicated countless hours over the years to make the Hillside Club what it is today. The present committee of chairman Jimmy Fox, Irene Lennon, Durbler Fox, Nola Fox, and Karen Rannings. The club meets every second Wednesday in Curry Cattle Hall with a tech party, many activities, and enjoy a cup of tea. The club occasionally organise day trips for its members out and about around the country, something really enjoyed by all. This is a fantastic resource for the elderly citizens in parish and surrounding areas. Ladies and gentlemen, I call upon chairman Jimmy Fox and we have the Hillside Club.
Just to say, oh, I have some of this. Just to say, thank you as always, councillor Lanford, I'm beaten. You can say, don't, don't be, don't be, don't worry about it. But it was lovely to sit down there on the chair and have a few talk. Tonight, Paddy Muntz and I used to sit behind the table, and after all, the board, I was kicking back all the time, if you sat in front of me, green in your face. It's a great memory, but I never would know whether it's you or chair.
Our final, our final nomination this evening is for Roger Martin. Roger was nominated by our peer of the year as the governor for Gorman. Roger, a living legend around Brannad and North Lanford, played his first PM at senior level at St Mary's at Brannad in nineteen fifty-four, and his career continued with retirement in nineteen seventy-six. That year, he captured St Mary's victory in the Special Junior League. And at the time, he also played with Lanford at junior, intermediate, and senior level. Following on from his retirement, he wasn't just ready to hang up the boots. He was a competent and fair referee and trained and coached many teams throughout the years. And one of the highlights of his career was leading St Mary's at Brannad to winning their last senior championship in nineteen eighty-two. Since then, he coached many school teams, minor teams, and under twenty-one level. He's an inspiration and mentor to many, a true gentleman. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Roger Martin.
For what I said, I want to say a few words, a few words to say for him, and he got one. I had nothing to say. Said enough. In Australia, with my, and children, children's championships. But I'd like to thank, for not a little bit, I think, around Brannad. Because some people could be more disturbed and get in the way of it, and I did. It's just that I would not want to be up front. Being a lame leg, with the other bad, another time for that. And then the Don chat there, and now you're having no one, the referee can start that soccer team along. And we're all in trouble, all is in trouble. And I'd say to say that, I'm a very brave man, because he kept calling. Well, I'd like to thank the councillor for not a little bit, and for the council, for this award, and wish you a good evening, and see you soon.
I now call on our chief executive, Paddy Mann, to give the closing speech.
Thanks very much, thanks very much, Claire. I hear you, Turner, I hear you at the Municipal District Council, very, very special guests and colleagues. It's an absolute privilege and real pleasure to be here this evening for what's one of the real highlights of the year, really, of the Lanford County Council, the Pride Day Awards. It's something, you know, it's hard to be here at the council, really. And earlier on this year, each individual municipal district would have considered who to nominate, and Turner, I hear, would have considered who he would like to see as, as somebody who's come here before. And tonight, the combination of all that process. And it's just lovely, it's lovely to see so many people here. With the weather, I suppose, it's a beautiful day, but it's a really, really celebration. And for me and my colleagues, it's, you know, it's one of the highlights of our year. And, you know, as I said, we're delighted to be here. And the contributions that people make, whether it's a voluntary community, like Vali Cotton, or Hillside, or whether it's fantastic enterprise, great in the heart of the town of France and Delores, and all the other work they do for the community. And for Roger, or for, you know, what you have done, you know, out for your town and your region, you know, it's, it's just a small opportunity for us to recognise the huge, huge contribution that you, you know, you have made over many, many years. And it's a privilege for us in the county council to just sit back and reflect on the kind of contributions that you have made to your community, your county, and indeed beyond that, in many places. And I'd just like to thank Rosie, who thanked us so beautifully, and John, who we'll be thanking later, I think, Tara, Trina, she made the go. The different, Paddy Cotton, Carrie, Carrie Boy, Franklin Delores, and the Hillside Club. But particularly like to acknowledge our car hearing, Paul Ross, a peer for Brannad Municipal District, Colin, a peer for Brannad Municipal District, and Gerry, a peer for Lanford Municipal District, for, you know, for all your support for tonight, but not just that, for throughout the year. It's not for County Council, as Turner said, we do punch over ways, but we're a very ambitious council. We have some very, very great communities here, we have a great council here, we have very productive, really good active members. And we work together as a team, I believe, for the benefit and for the continued progress of Lanford County. And for me, it's a pleasure to be able to be here and to say that. And thank the colleagues for the huge support we get from all the members. The ones that, in particular, I'd like to thank, of our here for the year, the notary, this year isn't over yet, because we're going to start June, and the AGM is at the end of June. And I'm fairly sure you have a lot of plans packed in for the next few weeks before our AGM, which I think is about three or four weeks from now. But from my part, I have sat with Turner throughout the year, and I've been very, very impressed with how he has stepped into the role of car hearing, and how he has really led, as first citizen of Lanford, the county with a pride and a passion, and also a really good humour. And many of our acting, Turner has definitely grown, many, many friends for Lanford County Council, whether it's here in the county, whether it's throughout the country. And he's been very, very busy representing us throughout the country, and indeed, representing abroad. And it was a unique sort of highlight for me, being with Turner in pride last year, where the county was represented at the very highest level in Europe for enterprise through the new digital open network system. And, you know, to, to, to see, as Turner said, punch over ways, it's very, very nice that sometimes we do get acknowledged, you know, in, in, in the highest level of Europe. And it's, I think that acknowledgement is very, very important. It's good, yeah, it's good to be told that you're doing a good job, whether it's locally or nationally. And I suppose here tonight, to go back to where I started, it's almost really privileged to recognise the fantastic contributions that you make to your communities. And it's, it's a very fitting occasion for us to just sit back and congratulate you for what you've done. So with that, I'd like to thank all my colleagues who are here, like Claire, or for all my work here at an organised event. Barbara, Nora, Paul, Linda, Jared, Helen, Evan, Nora, Mike, and anybody else, my listeners. Thank you all for your support, for being here, and for all the opportunity to make this evening such a special evening for us here at Lanford County Council. So with that, I think that that would be the body.
Thank you. Before we conclude, I would like to invite John Miller to the stage. And John is the most thing for us, October's gardens.
I'd like to be under the sea, in an octopus's garden in the shade. He'd let us in, knows where we've been, in his octopus's garden in the shade. I'd ask my friends to come and see, an octopus's garden with me. I'd like to be under the sea, in an octopus's garden in the shade. We would be warm, below the storm, in our little hideaway beneath the waves. Oh, what joy for every girl and boy, knowing that they're happy and they're safe. We would be so happy, you and me, no one there to tell us what to do. I'd like to be under the sea, in an octopus's garden with you. We would shout and swim about, the coral that hides beneath the waves. Oh, what joy for every girl and boy, knowing they're happy and they're safe. We would be so happy, you and me, no one there to tell us what to do. I'd like to be under the sea, in an octopus's garden with you. In an octopus's garden with you. In an octopus's garden with you.
That brings to a conclusion the formalities for this evening. So if I could ask the awardees and their families just to wait a few moments, we will have our refreshments, and then share the cork and we'll... will give you an opportunity to take some photographs in the chamber, and we'll call you out table by table. The refreshments will be served outside the auditorium in the canteen, and again, you will take it table by table to get moved. So please enjoy the rest of your evening and thank you. And again, thank you to all my colleagues here in Lanford County Council, to the management team, my own colleagues, our musicians. Stuart and our musicians, Pauline and John, to request you for the refreshments and our talk with Shelley Corcoran. Thank you all.